The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jody Ross, Eric Hydeman, and Jeff Morissette.
I'll move to.
Can I have that motion?
Second.
And we need to roll call vote from the Select Board. So Anita.
Hi.
Mark.
Yes.
Tom.
Hi.
I... Did I get everybody? You're all spread out all over the place.
I...
And Scott. I knew I forgot somebody.
I...
Time for a new clerk.
Definitely. You know? Okay. So we all have to sign out because we're going to go... Or do we need the 12 North Main Street to also... To make the same motion? So if somebody from the 12 North Main Street could make that motion, please? No, you need to say it out loud.
This is Jane Hughes, Chair of the 12 North Main Street Task Force. I think we should go into executive session to consider the value of our own state, 12 North Main Street. Because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. They have a motion to move into executive session.
I'll second that motion, Jane. Tom Berry.
Roll call, Tom Berry.
Yes.
Bob Wascavage.
Yes.
Eric Hydeman. Nancy Bussell. Yes. I think Nancy Cook's in there. And Jane Hughes, yes.
And Chris Karpinski, yes.
And I think you have Chris Karpinski.
Chris Karpinski.
Yes.
Okay. Everybody needs to sign out. We're going to close this out. And then everybody sign back in, okay? And we'll see you all in a couple of minutes.
Welcome to the webinar. Please stand by. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, April 27, 2021. Thank you all for your patience. I know we're already starting to run late, but we were in an executive session that went a little bit longer than 7:30. So I appreciate everybody's patience in waiting for us. Let's, if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mark.
My Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a really jam-packed agenda tonight with lots of business to try and get to and accomplish. So I am going to ask everybody who is speaking tonight to be mindful of our agenda to really speak to the issues that are on the agenda to be as concise as you possibly can be and to understand that the board has read and we do read all of the materials in our packets and that you send us and submit to us. So I just ask that everybody keep that in mind. I also, just doing my usual announcements, this meeting is being recorded. All comments that we receive are written or otherwise are made part of the public record. If you have a comment or a question, please, please, please write it in the question box so that we will be sure to see it and we don't miss anything. I know that there is also the ability to raise your hand. We try and scroll through that to make sure we're not missing anyone. We sometimes do. I can tell you that right now there are 40 people attending this meeting right now. So in terms of, you know, keeping track of that and people's hands being raised, it's sometimes hard. We sometimes miss them. So if you all would try your best to write your questions in the question box, it would be much appreciated. Okay, with that, starting with open forum, we are tonight recognizing and thanking Paul Puth, who has been our assessor, our primary assessor for the last 22 years. Paul is retiring at the end of this week after a illustrious career here in Westford. Paul started as our Assistant Assessor in 1999, and one year later, in 2000, he was promoted to our Principal Assessor, which is the position that he has held here in town since. Over the last 22 years, Paul has, as we all have, seen tremendous growth in the town and has overseen the assessing of major developments here in town, including Cornerstone Square, the Princeton Properties Orchard Square, Abbott Mills 1 and 2, and most recently, Hanover Westford Hills in Hanover Westford Valley. He's also instrumental in the TIF projects that came to town during the late '90s and early 2000s and helping all of us through the very complicated financial models that need to be used for that. Paul's skill and expertise and knowledge is unmatched. He was an active participant in the Slider Committee, providing the necessary technical information for the means-tested senior property tax exemption that was passed at town meeting, was passed by the legislature and that we all will be voting on on May 4. That's a little plug to remember to vote. And also, several years ago, at the request of the Select Board, Paul undertook a study of the split tax rate. Paul undertook a study of the split tax rate and whether it remained something that was beneficial for the town or not concluding that it was not something that would increase the town's tax base and help us at all. He's been a valued and respected colleague in the Finance Department and throughout Town Hall. So we thank Paul for his years of service here to the town, and we wish him well in this new stage of his life and as he starts his retirement years. So Paul, thank you very much on behalf of the board and on behalf of the town. And Jody, I think you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Paul did not want fanfare, and he is at his daughter's birthday party tonight. But he's been remarkable. It's not an easy job, and we've grown so much. So I did write him a letter. I won't read it, but I just want to recognize he's done an amazing job. He will be sorely missed, but I hope he enjoys his retirement. He has, I believe, three grandchildren now, so he's got a lot to keep him busy.
Okay, thank you. So the other thing as part of open forum is tonight is Mark Cuthbert's last meeting as a member of the Select Board. And I'm not sure if he is applauding on behalf of himself, the board, or the community, or what. But on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank Mark, and I'd also like to thank Mark personally for his service. The one thing that you can say about Mark during his years of service on the Select Board is that you always knew where Mark stood. There was never any doubt on any issue as to where he stood. He wasn't afraid to take a position that he knew would not be popular. But whether you agreed with him or not, you always knew where he stood, and there was never a surprise in terms of what he was thinking or how he was contemplating a situation. Just to remind folks, during Mark's tenure on the board, he served several other roles. He has been a representative on the Capitol Committee, and I'm really pleased to report that he's agreed to continue as a citizen representative on the Capitol Committee. Mark's been on the Capitol Committee since its very inception, so the experience and the historical knowledge that he brings to that committee is very much needed, and I'm glad that we will still have it as that committee goes forward. He was also part of the Public Works Initiative Committee, and that is the committee that ultimately led to the establishment of our DPW now. I think Mark was on that for about seven years, again from its inception until its fulfillment of getting a DPW in place. He was our representative to the Community Center Millworks Recreation Department Task Force when we were looking at recreational issues and seeing how all of these different entities could work together and complement one another. And most recently, he was a member of the Stormwater Fee Appeals Panel. Each of, you know, each of us who are on the Select Board bring our own areas of expertise and knowledge to the position. Mark brought his considerable background as a former CFO in finance to the board. He brought his expertise and experience. He was always willing to question the assumptions and the information that underlaid budgets that were presented to us or financial reports that were presented to us, always willing to drill down into those financials so that not only could the board understand it, but so that the town was fully apprised of what was going on. You and I didn't always agree, Mark, and we come from different philosophies at times, but I always and always respected the integrity and the honesty that you brought to the Select Board. I always respected your viewpoint, and I have never doubted your commitment to the town and to its best interests. I wish you well, and I hope that you won't be a stranger after your term ends on the Select Board. So thank you very much. And I know that some other members of the board would also like to say something. So I don't know who wants to start. Scott?
Oh, a question you know has to be a history lesson. But one of my favorite public figures is Harry Truman, because he has two biographies. One is called Plain Speaking, and the other one is called Give Him Hell, Harry. So when I think about Mark, it's Plain Speaking and Give Him Hell, Mark. What I liked about that was, A, you asked my questions. You didn't accept using the answer, which everybody wants to give us easy answers and have us say yes, whether it be finances or a dangerous dog or an asphalt plant. You ask the hard questions to get honest answers, to make good decisions. And you never really back down. You had a well-reasoned vote, and you made that. You stood by it, and you told me where you stood. And nothing is appreciated more than an honesty, integrity, and backbone of the town committee. So it's been great to serve with you.
Tom?
There seem to be some themes developing here. Appreciating Mark. I'll echo two of them. One is just a real appreciation for how much time and effort Mark has invested in really understanding everything, but especially the finances. It's not easy for everyone to do, but both when I was on the School Committee and now, Mark really invested the time, careful thought, really got into the details, and I really appreciate that about him. And also, you didn't have to agree with Mark, but there was always a respectful dialogue. He was always willing to meet with me. He was always willing to look and listen to what I had to say. And I think it's sort of a high watermark of how government's supposed to work, that if you disagree, even if you enter the room thinking you might disagree, to have that kind of respectful, honest sharing of ideas, it's how I think a lot of things should work, and I hope more of them work that way. Thanks, Mark.
I'm just going to go. I'm the last one. You know, I've learned a lot from Mark just sitting here on this flagboard this past year, but I actually have two really specific memories that I wanted to share with people that were from before I was on Select Board. So actually, and these are kind of more specific examples of what Andrea was saying just a couple of minutes ago. And one was that Mark's real commitment to the community, that it's one community and that it's one town and we're one, like, really huge family. It was actually my first call with Mark. When I was just introducing myself, everyone's like, Anita, watch out for Mark. He's like, really, like, whatever. You definitely have this reputation, but you are so nice. And this one memory that I take with me all the time is how you're like, you know, across the town, people might argue, people might disagree, people might bicker, but there'll be a decision at some point, and then we are all going to come together, we're going to hold hands, and you're going to move forward as one town. And I really respect that vision, and I definitely think about that whenever we're all having agreements or disagreements in our meetings. Then in the end, we are one group when we are looking for the best interests of the town. And I felt like you really embody that. And the second part was just your dedication to the role, how hard you work for the town. I remember when I was just sitting in on School Committee budget meetings as a parent, kind of trying to understand what was going on. You were there for every meeting in person. And I was asking, why are you there? Why aren't you just watching this online? And you were like, you want to understand the people in the community and that there's a different way to read the people in the room that you don't get when you're just watching online. And that you weren't boastful about it at all. You were just matter-of-fact, this is how you approach your role on the Select Board. And that was, I just have so much respect for you, and I'm so glad that we got to overlap for at least one year. And I'm glad I'm going to be able to serve with you on the Capitol Planning Committee, because I know we definitely need your voice there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Jody?
Thank you. Just quickly, Mark, I have really enjoyed all the years, First Finance Committee and all the other committees, and of course, Select Board. And I think you really challenged me. You asked me probably more questions than any Select Board in the past 27 years, Select Board member. But, you know, I just, I greatly admire your thought processes. I think you've really helped us improve our financial documents that we share, our presentations, by challenging us to show different ways. I think you've made vast improvements. I really admire that you speak exactly what you feel, and I like that, because I like to know exactly where we stand. And I always knew that with you. And sometimes we didn't agree, but we always, you always had my back, even when we didn't agree. So I'm going to miss you as a Select Board member, but I hope there's many, many challenges ahead, and I am keeping you on Capitol issues. No, I'm expanding the membership, because we can't lose you. So thank you so much for all the years. And come back for the dog hearings. You can be in the audience.
Mark?
Okay, well, so I'll thank you all for, that is all very kind. And this may be a surprise to you, but I was afraid I would be at a loss of words tonight and not say what I wanted to say. So I actually wrote some things down. So if you give me two minutes, Andrea, I'll do that. So for about 14 years, I've had the great pleasure of being very engaged in how our town operates and hope that I've added some helpful processes, some thoughtful points, counterpoints, a continued push for accountability and truth, and when necessary, the occasional levity. I would certainly encourage anyone who can make the time to get involved, whether it be elected, appointed, or simply as a volunteer, to do it. But do it because you want to help all of Westford continue to be great. Don't be the loudest, just be the fairest. Don't just listen to those who approach you, but also those, and more importantly, who don't. And don't pit one portion of our town or its finances against another. And lastly, don't take the role or yourself too seriously. Enjoy it, embrace the people whom you're working with, and help continue to push Westford forward. I also need for everyone to know how truly blessed Westford is to have the kinds of people working for us that our town has. I've been in leadership positions in many companies, large and small, and I would put our employees at the top of all of them when it comes to service, commitment, attitude, and character. Now, it's not to say that there are not some bad days, and we all have them. Everybody does. But honestly, you should be proud of what you accomplish each and every day. I'm talking to the town's employees now, and how important you are to what makes Westford, Westford. Thank you for putting up with my seemingly never-ending queries. Quality service and employee engagement starts at the top, and Westford has as fine a leader as we could get with Jody. We've had, as she mentioned, spart at times, but that's what leadership should do. But when a decision is made, you hold hands and you move on. Jody, you have accomplished a tremendous amount since you've been here, always looking at ways to do better and be more efficient, but never sacrificing quality. Thank you for all that you have done and for helping me be more effective in my roles. Fellow board members, I will miss our get-togethers. Anita, you are a great addition to this board with your humbleness, your willingness to get all points of view, and your leadership. And I wish you continued success in all your leadership roles going forward. Tom, I've enjoyed our ability to dialogue, starting, as you mentioned, when you were on the School Committee, when I was on the Finance Committee, and of late, on this board. You bring great passion and an endless amount of commitment, and I thank you for all of that. Andrea and Scott, it seems as if we've been working together a long time, probably longer for you than longer for me. And I must say, you have both taught me so much. Your continued dedication is something I hope everyone in town sees, because you bring great value to this town in all aspects. I thank you both for all of that. So in closing, Westford continues to be full of promise, and I will continue to help out where I can, add some value. I wish nothing but the best for the new board going forward.
Thank you. I only wish that we could be together this last time, as you just said, Mark. Right, group hug. All right. With that, we actually have to get to the business of our meeting tonight. So we are now at our 7:35 PM item, and as I said, we're already starting late. So everybody just recognized that we're going to be late throughout the evening. So we're at our 7:35 PM item, which is a continued discussion of the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail's request to add outdoor art to the trail following the Park and Recreation Commission of Butters meeting on the issue. So let me just set the stage a little bit and give a little introduction. So I did attend the public meeting last night that was held by the Park and Recreation Commission. There were about 30 folks who attended that meeting. It was a lively discussion. It was a respectful discussion where we heard from a lot of Butters, many Butters, and we heard both concerns as well as praise and support, as well as non-support. I want to make clear that the purpose of this meeting tonight, as was the purpose of the Park and Recreation Commission meeting last night, is to discuss this particular project with the doors and where the doors are actually going to be located. We heard some concerns last night about communication between Butters and the town and the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and the rail trail itself. Those issues are very valid and should be addressed, but not tonight, folks. It's for another meeting. It's for a future meeting. But I don't want anybody to think that we are not going to discuss those issues and that we are just sort of sloughing them off. But for tonight, the issue is this particular project and the location of the doors. The board has received many letters over the last two weeks from folks. We have read them all. They are in our packets. They will be part of the public record. We thank everybody who took the time and made the effort to reach out to us and to write to us. We appreciate receiving all of your comments, and we have and will take them into consideration in our deliberation tonight. As I said, last night, the Parks and Recreation Commission held a public meeting. There was lengthy and in-depth discussion about the project. And as a result of that discussion, there have been some changes to the location of the doors based on that discussion, based on comments that we heard from the Butters. So changes to the locations that we saw that were presented to us two weeks ago. At the end of the Park and Recreation Commission meeting, the Park and Recreation Commission again took a vote and voted unanimously to support the project with two conditions. The first of which was that where the location of Doors 1 and 2 were, which was near Landmark Road, those were going to be removed. And the decision was also, the vote was also conditioned on is that midway through this project, you know, somewhere perhaps around July or August, you know, no date was set, there would be a meeting held to basically just review the project, to discuss if any concerns have arisen, any problems with the doors, but that we would do a mid-season review. And with those two conditions, the Park and Recreation Commission voted unanimously to support the project. At this point, I'm going to ask Chris Barrett to briefly, keyword briefly, go through a bit of a presentation, but most importantly, Chris, focusing on where the location of the doors are now being considered based on what we heard last night from the Butters. So if, Eric, you would unmute Chris, and Chris would unmute himself. I will turn it over to you right now, Chris, okay?
Great, thank you, Andrea. Chris Barrett, a member of the Town of Westford's Park and Recreation Commission. Andrea gave a great synopsis of what went on at the meeting last night, over an hour and a half of great discussions. last night. Over an hour and a half of great discussion. Uh, Eric, if we could move to, I think it's the second to last slide that will have the, uh, actual map that we want to discuss. Yeah, that, that's good, right there. Thank you. Oh, go back one? There you go. Yep. So this was the, uh, the maps that were displayed at last night's committee, commission meeting. Um, as Andrea pointed out, as a result of a lot of good give and take between, uh, residents and the commission, uh, we've decided to move forward with six locations. Uh, those locations are identified on this map with the yellow, with the red circle, with the yellow, uh, inner part. Um, those are at the, uh, where the trail crosses Route 27, uh, or Acton Road, and then two more located along the trail between Acton Road and Griffin, and then three other locations, uh, towards the end of the Westford section of the trail near Greenwood Road. Um, I will point out that, um, these are, this is a temporary exhibit. Uh, these doors are small in nature. Um, they are movable. So, uh, while we will be having a sort of a midpoint, uh, check-in with the Butters as to how this, uh, this exhibit is moving forward and, uh, we have the ability to move these, um, doors if we have to, um, as needed. So what I would like to ask for everybody, uh, tonight is, you know, let's give this a chance. This exhibit was designed to be viewed, uh, incrementally as you move along down the trail at pieces by pieces, not in singular clumps of doors. Uh, I understand there's still some concerns about the potential locations, uh, between Griffin Road and Acton Road. But as I said earlier, I say, let's give this a chance. Let's see how it plays out. If for any reason there are some issues, you know, or concerns or cart, that they crop up because of the placement of a door, we do have the ability to move it without much effort. So, uh, I want to thank everybody involved with the project, uh, and with the communication and the meetings that have been going on for this. Uh, it's really great to see that all these, all these residents are getting involved and, uh, you know, want to be part of the discussion. So thank you all.
Okay. Um, Mark?
Yeah. So first of all, Chris, uh, to you and the committee, and, um, I just want to say thanks for doing that meeting. Um, you know, I know I, you know, it was one of my last things. I was, uh, you know, kind of a little pushy on that, but it was, as you saw, I mean, it's just so important, uh, to get all that input. I know you always like it anyway. Um, but I just appreciate you following through, um, on that. So thank you for doing it.
You're very welcome. It was a great suggestion.
Um, other comments. Uh, Tom?
Uh, just really, uh, the, the spirit of sort of listening to both sides, working to, to find a balance point, hearing the concerns, much appreciated. Really good process, I think. Uh, and I think that this, this proposal reflects, uh, you know, a lot of thoughtfulness on everyone's part. So, uh, I'm excited to support it.
Okay. Um, Anita?
Yeah. Um, also thanks for that meeting and thanks to Andrea for, um, switching the liaison role with me and sitting in on that meeting. Um, I support this project. I think it's a great idea. I do. Um, I know this is tabled for later, but just kind of the continuing discussions with the Butters to address the concerns that I feel like are persistent concerns that aren't specific necessarily to, um, the public art, um, installation pieces. But, um, I'm glad that there's an opportunity to continue those, um, that dialogue.
Okay. And Scott?
Yes, I missed the last meeting, but trust me, I've, uh, I've, uh, done the research, um, of what happened and, uh, discussions and the various lotus pro and con. And, um, I guess I'll join the board and, and saying thanks to, uh, to Chris, to Emily, to the, uh, Parks Rec for, you know, opening up this up to a public dialogue. I think we get the best solutions when we have, uh, you know, give and take of, of personal feelings and, um, uh, again, pro and con. Um, and the flexibility that's shown, I think, is in keeping with the spirit of the rail trail, which is, you know, we've all been, uh, most of us have been enthused to see that, that, uh, come to be expanded. And I've been to some of the open ground, ground openings, uh, groundbreakings for it. Um, and I think it's been wonderful to see the, um, uh, I guess openness of the, of the rail trail committee to listen to our neighbors and make changes to try to keep everybody happy.
Okay. Um, I, I will just echo, um, what my fellow board members have said. Um, uh, I, I, I'm excited about this project. I think, um, I, I think it will be, it'd be really cool just to see some art along the, uh, trail itself. Um, I also, um, having attended last night's meeting, um, you know, last night's meeting worked the way public meetings are supposed to work. There was an open and frank discussion that allowed all of everybody's viewpoints to be expressed and to be heard, uh, to, you know, compromises made, concessions made, and all done in a very respectful, courteous manner. And, and that's what's supposed to happen and that's what's supposed to occur. So to everyone who participated last night, um, from Chris and Emily and, uh, the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, to all of the Butters who have participated last night, um, thank you all very much. Um, I think you made this process a very good one, um, and a very useful one. And you raised, in addition, as I said earlier, some, some very valid concerns that, um, we will address, uh, with you, um, at a few, you know, at a future meeting. Um, we do have some comments, uh, uh, in, um, uh, in our, in our comment box. So let me just, um, take a look at those. Um, so, um, Brian Sked has said, will the last location map be published somewhere? And, um, I think the answer to that can be yes. I think, um, we can put that on the town website. Um, I'm, I would not presume to speak for the Park and Recreation Commission, but I suspect that if we ask them, that they'll put that up on their website as well. Um, and, um, I think it probably can go up on the Friends of Bruce Freeman Rail Trail site if, um, as well. So, um, so yes, the answer to that, um, is yes. Um, oh, um, and then we have a, um, oops, whoops, wrong one. Um, a, a comment, um, from Cheryl Major, um, that I will read. Um, and then, um, Cheryl, if you want to add to it, um, we can, um, uh, unmute you. But, um, Cheryl writes, how is it possible for the select board to vote on this issue? You still don't know what the project is. Last night at the Parks and Rec meeting, we were shown two plans for installation. Then we were told maybe six doors would be installed, maybe not. Also, the locations still have not been determined. It appears the project is at the same place it was two weeks ago. We still don't know what you will be voting on. Most of my neighbors and I would appreciate knowing the number and locations of the installations before a vote is taken. Considered locations is not a disclosure of locations. Um, I, um, to respond to that, um, I think, um, at this point, um, after the discussion last night, we do know the location of the, where the doors are going to be put, um, as shown on the map that, uh, Chris and Eric, uh, had up, uh, just a little while ago. Um, we did take, the locations today are not the same ones as two weeks ago. Yes, we did remove two of the doors, uh, based on comments that we heard last night. But I think at this point, we, we do know where they're going to be. And, um, as Chris said, if for some reason there is, uh, a, a real issue with, with one of the doors, they, they are movable. Um, and, uh, we can certainly take a look at that if, if such, uh, an issue arises. Um, and so, um, with that, um, oh, hang on a minute, a few more. I answered that one. Wait a minute. Bear with me. Okay. Um, uh, the question going forward, can there be an official open discussion for dialogue for the rail trail? Um, as I said, yes, we are not putting that, uh, we're, we're not sloughing that off. We are just, that is not the discussion for tonight. Um, we will put it on a future, uh, agenda. We will make sure that all of you know when it is on the agenda for a discussion. Um, Shoshana Perry writes, I would like to see if there's any movement on number one and number two. I was not able to attend the meeting, uh, last night. Um, I think, um, at, at this point, um, and for this year, um, I think, um, the, the decision, um, uh, has been made and, and was announced at the Park and Recreation Commission, and the Park and Recreation Commission vote was, uh, contingent upon, um, having the doors one and two, um, uh, removed from that site. So, um, I would say at this point, um, no, um, as, uh, as a result, uh, because of what the Park and Recreation Commission vote was last night and, um, um, I think if we, if we went back on that, we would again have to go back to the Park and Recreation Commission for another vote. Um, let's see. Thanks. Um, I would like to speak strong, um, and Shoshana Perry also writes, I would like to speak strongly in favor of all the doors. I do not walk as far as where the doors will be and would be quite disappointed to not be a part of the art effort. Um, Chris, I, I think something was mentioned last night that there may be one door in Carlisle. Is that true?
Yes, that's correct. There's a total of seven doors, uh, for this project. One would be located in Carlisle and six in Westford.
So, um, it may be, um, and I don't know, Shoshana, but it may be that, um, um, you know, the, the Carlisle door will be a play, a, a door that you'll be able to see and be able to, to walk to. Um, Tim Walsh writes, were the Butters on Colonial Drive notified? Um, if you are in a Butter within 300 feet, uh, of the rail trail, then you would have gotten notification. The 300-foot notification is in, is consistent with, um, what we do for, um, notification for under zoning bylaws, um, and development. Um, Hale Powell writes, forgive my redundancy, but I'm in a Butter who is very supportive of the art project. I was not able to attend last night. Um, can you summarize briefly the comments that were in opposition to the art installation? Um, in, in essence, uh, most of the, the comments were, uh, concern about, uh, location, uh, um, uh, the, um, uh, the distance from, um, uh, residential, uh, areas. Uh, there were some, uh, concerns about, uh, increased, uh, use and, uh, traffic on the rail trail, um, uh, uh, trash, um, uh, and whether, um, uh, having the artwork on the trails, uh, would, uh, in somehow or in some way, uh, cause increase to, um, use, uh, trash and noise. Um, so those were the comments. Okay. Um,
Andrea, if I may, I just wanted to point out that, uh, the meeting was, uh, recorded and was, it should be available on Westford Cat. So if people did miss it, they have an opportunity to view it.
Okay. I think I have gotten everybody's comments. It looks that I, like I have. I'm just, I'm, bear with me, folks. I'm just running through, um, to make sure that I have them. I think so. Emily, tell her, you have your hand up. Um, did you, um, did you want to say something? I'm going to say, I guess not. Okay. Um, all right.
Oh, now I'm unmuted, but no, I'm fine. Um, you know, I think Chris is representing the door locations better than I could, and I think that's the essential part of this evening. I did stop and talk to three Butters today and had excellent conversations with them. Um, and there are can, some concerns. So, but I think the idea to go ahead and see what happens and check in is the best one to do at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, just a couple of last comments that just came in. Um, uh, this is from Ahmad and, um, and, and Donna Awad. Um, and if I've mispronounced your last name, I apologize. Um, I'm sorry, it's, um, Awada. Um, we are Butters on Colonial Drive. We would like to make note here tonight that the map and notice presented to Colonial Drive resident and a Butters indicating locations was changed and approved at 8:20 last night with a change to the initial location. And Shoshana Perry writes, one, oops, oh my goodness. Um, one last question. If the doors can be moved and things are working well, can they move, move to spots one and two later in the season? Um, I think that's probably a question we can, uh, either discuss or raise when we have our mid-season review. Can the committee confirm that a communication plan regarding the trail be discussed prior to any new potential trail updates that may be proposed? All I can promise is that the select board will schedule a meeting in which we will discuss communications between the rail trail and the town at a future meeting sometime in the not-too-distant future. Certainly sometime either, sometime this summer, we will get this on our agenda. Again, um, this similar comment, um, I think a concern that has not really been brought up was a lack of process that included those who may be impacted negatively by this installation, also would crest to possibly formalize this process in the future. Um, okay, most, and then the process was substantially addressed last night, but should have been occurred before the initial vote. So, most of the remaining comments are about process and addressing process in the future. Yes, we are going to do that, just not tonight. And we will do that and put that on a meet, and, uh, as I said, we will put it on an, uh, agenda for sometime in a meeting this summer. We will make sure that folks are notified so that you all know when it happens, so that you can participate, uh, in, in the meeting. Michelle Pilado, Pilato, Pilati, uh, I agree with Shoshana. I would like to have that cited to, at 27, 220, 225 reconsidered if all is going well. Um, and then Cheryl Major wrote, what are the concerns that were shared with Emily today by a Butters? Um, Emily, do you want to answer that? And, um, with that last comment, um, we're going to take, the, the board is going to take a vote.
Sorry. Okay, I was muted until just now. Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Um, I, I think it's typical concerns. Um, I think people are nervous about what might happen. Uh, one of the Butters had an incident years ago and, um, I, I'm sad about that. Um, but I don't think necessarily this should be changed because of that. I think, I think the rail trail is in a different place than it has been. I think people are using it more and I think people going off the trail, I think, are not doing that as much anymore. So I'm hopeful that things going forward will be positive with this. And I'm very glad that we're having a halfway through meeting. I would also encourage a Butters, if there's a problem, to call the police if there are incidents that should be reported. And I think you can also get in touch with the select board and Chris or myself. We're open to receiving feedback because that's what we're here for.
Okay. As I said, um, that was going to be the last comment. Um, so Tom? You're muted.
Ready to make a motion and I foiled myself. Um, so with gratitude to all for, right, what sounds like a really great process and what was a great process, I move to, uh, support the plan, approve the plan as voted by the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Thank you all very much. Um, as I said, we will make sure that everybody knows when we schedule the, uh, agenda items. We're talking about process going forward. We're talking about process going forward. We will also make sure that everybody knows when the mid-season meeting is scheduled and where and when that will be held. Haven't figured those logistics out yet, but once we do, we'll let everybody know. So thank you all very much for your participation and for your comments. And I think we all look forward to what hopefully will be a very enjoyable event for everyone. So thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. I have to go. Yep, Chris?
Yeah, sorry. Just going to actually beg a favor. My kids love it when I read to them before bed, and I was wondering if there's any chance we could take my pedestrian safety request out of order this evening?
No problem. Give me one minute before we do that, Chris.
Absolutely. Totally understand.
Bob Schaffer has sent in a note and said, what happened to open forum? I had my hand raised. Therein lies the problem. Need to announce upcoming survey for DTROD article and upcoming info forums. So Bob, why don't you unmute yourself and Eric unmute him and let Bob Schaffer do that, and then Chris, we'll go to you, okay?
All right. Thank you, Andrea. Real quickly here, what we've looked at doing with the drive-through restaurant article is to structure it as a drive-through restaurant overlay district, hence the DTROD abbreviation. We are going to be trying to run a survey during the month of May, hoping to announce that on the town website later this week. I'm working with Jeff Morissette and IT to do that. Also looking to have two information forums on this to collect more input as well from the citizens and looking to hold those on May 6th, May 26th, two nights, a Thursday and a Wednesday. More information to follow later this week. We'll be announcing how that's going to be run. So in addition, we'll be participating in two Legal Women Voter forums on town meeting on the 19th and on the 3rd of June. So watch the town website, there'll be a lot more information. And we'll be doing that in conjunction with the Economic Development Committee Representatives. And lastly, I just want to ask and open up to any of the Select Board, if they want to participate in those forums as well, you're welcome to join us. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, Bob, and I'm sorry I missed you during open forum.
Thanks.
All right. Chris, let's go back to you, and we'll do your pedestrian safety request.
Great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. What we're looking to do is ask for the Select Board's support in drafting a public safety, public service, excuse me, announcement that focuses on pedestrian, bicycle, motorist safety, as well as good practices around using buses. Anita gave me a great suggestion earlier today about educating the public again about what to do with, you know, getting on and off the bus and what to do if you're a motorist around a bus, you know, make sure you stop when you see those flashing red signs. What we've included in your pack this evening is a very, very rough draft of what we envision. Our intent is to take some of that verbiage that's in the draft, try to find an enterprising student at WA who's savvy in graphic arts and come up with something that's quite flashy that still communicates accurately the intent and information that we're trying to get out to the public, and then look to try to display that on the town website, emails, maybe the Town Manager's Newsletter, ask the schools if they would be willing to put it on their bulletin board or in some of their email blast to the students. And we hope to try and get this done, you know, before the students leave school so that we can get everybody out and educated before summertime. So that's the request before you, and we hope that you would support us in this initiative.
Well, I think it's a great request as somebody who does a lot of walking around this town. Yeah, just reminding everybody that there are walkers and bicyclists out there, and please be careful of us. We appreciate it. So I think it's a great idea. I'm wondering, Chris, if in terms of, you know, the, you know, getting someone to design it and everything, I think, you know, finding a WA student who, you know, is learning or specializing in graphic design, I think would be terrific to maybe get them involved in the project and perhaps their friends as well. So I think that's a great idea. Tom, you had your hand up.
Yeah, full support. And just a thought for you, Chris, you may want to see if you can engage Westford Cat. They could make a little shareable video that I think might be friendly to kids who are on their phones a little bit. So offer that up. I know they'd be happy to help.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
All right. So is there a motion to support?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Thank you very much, Chris. Thanks for all your hard work. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you all. And Mark, I didn't get a chance to add to my congratulations, and you've done a great job. Love coming up before you at Select Board. Always kept me on my toes and obviously love working with you on capital planning. Wish you the best. Glad that we'll be continuing to work on capital planning together for the future. So thanks again.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Good night, everybody. Thank you so much.
Good night. Okay, we are at our 7:55 PM item, which is our consent agenda, and we have a request to approve the following. A banner request for the annual town election. The applicant is Lynn Cohen on behalf of the League of Women Voters. The dates are Wednesday, April 28th to Friday, May 7th, and the location is the JV Fletcher Library. Second, the town of Westford Memorial Day. Ryan Copley is the applicant. The dates are Sunday, May 23rd to Wednesday, June 2nd. The location is the JV Fletcher Library. Learn to Row. The applicant is Jonathan Reichich on behalf of the Westford Community Rowing from Friday, June 4th to Monday, June 14th, in the JV Fletcher Library. Annual Town Meeting, Lynn Cohen on behalf of the League of Women Voters, from Tuesday, June 8th to Tuesday, June 15th, at the First Parish Church. The request for the use of the town's common from, the event is the Town of Westford Memorial Day. Ryan Copley is the applicant, Sunday, May 30th, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then the lastly is a street or road closure request from, the event is the Cub Mobile. The applicant is Stephanie Godfrey, Cub Master for Cub Scout PAC 95, Three Fisher Wade at the Abbott School Parking Lot on Sunday, June 13th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. There are motion to approve the consent agenda together with our recommendations from the Public Safety Department.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Mom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
All right. Our 8:00 PM item.
Andrea, excuse me, is my vast evening of the cork. I don't believe we heard your, thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk extraordinaire. Okay, we're at our 8:00 PM item, which is a resident request to revise the town's stormwater management utility fee and credit policy, which allows for a maximum reduction for one step. And this is a request from Richard Paglia. So, Richard, if, Eric, if you would unmute Richard, and Richard can unmute himself. Yes, we can.
Hi, yes. So my request is that I'd like to have the board reconsider the clause within the stormwater management policy that allows for maximum reduction of just one step if an appeal is approved. I actually had, I appealed the fee. I was classified as step five, the highest step, and I submitted appeal with the paperwork to Paul Sterrett. It was approved, but I was only reduced down to tier four, one step. And I'm not clear, I don't really understand why the policy only allows for a one-step reduction, a maximum one-step reduction. If I can prove with proper documentation, which I believe I have, that I really belong at tier one, why shouldn't I drop from five down to one and only go down one tier?
I believe that Steve Cronin is out there. And so, Steve, there you are. If you, if you would just like to sort of remind the board exactly, you know, sort of how the appeal process works and what happens here, and also with respect to Richard's case, that would be great.
Yep, absolutely. So as you probably remember, we retained the services of Raff Tellus throughout the development and evaluation of funding solutions for the stormwater program. You know, Raff Tellus ultimately decided or recommended that we establish a three-tier funding solution for residential properties. Included in that, they also recommended certain credit and adjustment policies for the stormwater program. They cautioned us not to consider a credit policy for residential properties because they felt that, you know, through their establishment of other, you know, stormwater funding solutions across the country, that, you know, residential runoff from private properties really has a marginal impact on the overall compliance, basically meaning that, you know, reducing runoff really doesn't reduce the overall stormwater compliance cost. There are other costs associated with stormwater compliance, including infrastructure replacement, street sweeping, reporting, catch basin cleaning that will, the town will incur no matter what, even if, even if residential properties reduce their, their stormwater runoff. So they really felt that the credit policy should only be applied to non-single-family residential properties that had a stormwater compliance permit. That being said, the board ultimately decided that, in fairness to residential properties, they would recommend a five-tier structure as opposed to a three to make it a little bit more equitable for residential properties. And on top of it, decided that they would give residential properties the opportunity to apply for a credit and reduce their fee up to one tier. So even though it wasn't recommended by Raff Tellus, it was ultimately, ultimately decided to include that in the policy. Now, non-single-family residential properties do have the opportunity to achieve a credit up to 50% of their total stormwater fee. So it is not necessarily consistent between non-residential and residential properties, but that was ultimately the decision that was made.
You didn't answer my question. If, I guess, you're, it's, I believe, in all fairness, the amount of runoff coming from my property with the $100,000 worth of expenses that the town made me spend with a roof infiltration system with swales, and I can go on and on and on and list the number of improvements I needed to make to my property when my house was built. We were permanent 001, when the stormwater management policy was under construction, it wasn't even 100% done. I worked with Paul Sterrett and other engineers, and the town made me go through hoops to spend all types of extra money. And it, from what I understand, these assessments were done based upon aerial photos. Aerial photos do not show the underground filtration system that collects all the water from my roof, doesn't show all the underground swales. And I presented all the paperwork to Paul Sterrett. So, you know, why am I being asked to pay at the tier four level when I believe I rightfully should be paying probably a tier one?
Okay.
And you didn't really answer my question, Stephen, no disrespect.
All right. Steve, do you want to respond to Jody? I know you had your hand up.
So the policy only right now allows for a one-tier reduction. So we're not essentially within our authority to change that right now. That's before the board to consider. You know, the stormwater fee was based on the total cost of the stormwater program, so any changes to the credit policy is going to impact the revenue that's collected and have impacts on our ability to fund the program. We did receive 12 total credit applications. Six of those were approved. Four of them were for non-single-family residential properties. Two were for non-residential properties for a total revenue reduction of $930. Mr. Paglia's property, I believe he received a one-tier reduction from $150 to $9750. So that's a slight reduction in his, his overall stormwater fee, but certainly not 50% as non-single-family residential properties receive.
Yeah, and believe me, this has nothing to do about the money.
Mr. Paglia, Mr. Paglia, excuse me. Our town manager wanted to say something. I will get back to you, but please let, let me recognize some other folks. Jody?
Thank you. I had wanted to know the information Steve just said, how many applications we had. So I think the board really just needs to decide whether you would like to reconsider your policy and open up residential properties to be able to get more of a credit than a one-tier. And I think, as Steve said, the thought is not your individual house is paying just for your own runoff. You're helping to pay for the total town. But really, it's up to the board. If you think this is reasonable, then we certainly can bring the policy back and have it adjusted. If you want to stick with the policy that you have, then that's what we will do.
Mark?
Yeah, so if everybody recalls, this was done, right? There was always the intent to reevaluate based on actual practice. I think we just now have our second payment due, right?
Right.
Monday? I better write a check. So it was always meant to be that. And so my suggestion would be that, you know, maybe at the next meeting, is to kind of have that policy reviewed again, make sure everybody's clear on, you know, what its intent was, and then, and then reevaluate. Because there may be others other than Mr. Paglia who want to do that. I know, Steve, given the numbers that you just stated, it's well below what the expectations were, were expected to be as far as credits that might be issued. And again, that's just because there was no, no history, no, no practical experience in our town. So I think there's an opportunity between financially what we expected for credits as well as now the history of what's come forward to maybe reevaluate.
Right. So Stephen, I think you said that.
Mr. Paglia, I will let you speak again, but please let me recognize the other board members and then recognize you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Scott?
I'm going to echo Mark's comment. We did always intend to have this be a topic to revisit with more experience. I guess my question is, you know, there's some, you know, the tier one, there's some level of spend or billing that covers the town costs, right? And then as you incrementally create more runoff, that goes up. So I guess my question is, you know, at, at half of tier five, I hope that we'd be covering our, our town costs, you know, is this tier one, you know, cover the town cost? If we're going to come back at this in two weeks, I guess I kind of want to know where, you know, break even is to cover the town's capital assets before we factor in additional runoff from the residential properties.
Fair question, Mark.
Yeah, so, and again, just as a point of recall, so Paul had always said that it wasn't going to be a perfect identification of each piece of property and what their runoff was. Again, that was part of the experience, and part of the experience is also allowing residents and businesses to come forward and be able to, you know, how they fit into the explanation. So, you know, I think, and there was, based on history, based on Raff Tellus, or however, I can't remember how to pronounce the name, the percentage of other towns around the country of homes that would actually qualify, and that's how we came up with the, with the credit number that we had in the budget. So I think it just, you know, you could probably spend 10, 15 minutes just go through a real quick summary of what all the assumptions were and get in. Scott, I think that would answer, help answer your question as well. what all the assumptions were and get in Scott, I think that would answer, help answer your question as well.
Okay, Mr. Paglia?
Yeah. So my wife wants to speak as well, but Stephen, you mentioned that $900. So there was, I forget how many people applied for a credit. But if the town's objective is to raise the $1 million that they needed to, it seems to me that the $900 isn't taking much of an impact into that. So why not make it equitable? And I understand that the town decided to use the aerial photos. And they also figure, and I applaud the fact that they offered this appeal process to people that, that have an issue with the tier that they were placed at initially. But why not do the right thing and put people in the right tier that they belong in? And not prevent them from going to that proper tier that they belong in. I mean, the fact that I'm prevented to go to tier one, I just don't understand that.
Okay. Mr. Paglia, I think you said your wife wanted to speak as well?
Yes. Yeah, I'll put her on.
I don't know if you can hear me, but this is Leah. I think I already stated this and I'll be brief. It's really truly comes down to we feel like we're being discriminated against because of what we were put through when we built this place. It was unbelievable. So it goes to the fact that I wouldn't have spent 100 grand. I would just be paying you 150 over how many years? And it probably would be out of Westwood before I even went to $100,000. It's underground systems. I'm not going to get into it because my husband already did. But when we moved in this house, we were sued by the neighbors. We went through a lawsuit because they claimed water runoff was going on to the pop property and destroying it. We actually proved in court that less water was going on to their property than in the natural state this lot was in. We've proven to the court, we can prove to you less water than when this land was in its natural state is coming off this property because of all the systems. So I think it's a, it's like my husband said, a disgrace that you won't put someone in the proper category if they can prove it. I get it. You want to raise money. We pay an astronomical amount of taxes. And this is, I get it. You have to raise money, but it just should be on the case by case if someone can prove their case. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think, I, I think what I'm hearing and, and what we should do is, first of all, just to respond to one thing that you folks have raised. The appeal panel, which was Steve, Mark, and I can't remember who else was on the panel, to be honest with you. They did what they were, what they could do under what the select board at this point in time has passed and what the select board's policy is at this point in time. They acted consistent with that and they really don't have the authority to go beyond that policy. If there's going to be a policy change, then it has to come from the select board. And as has been indicated tonight, we all, this was a, this was something new. Okay? And we were all starting from scratch when we put our policy into place. We did the best that we could based on the information and the consultant that we had back then. We always understood that we would need to go through, you know, take a look at the processes, take a look at our policy, review them. So we're hearing and we're listening to what you're saying. And I think what you've heard from this board is that we will take a look at our policy and at our, at what we have already drafted. And if there needs to be an amendment and if we need to, you know, look at it and in some way tweak it, you know, this board is always willing to go back and look at things and to make things better and improve things. So we can do that. We can put that on our, on an agenda either at our next meeting or sometime in the future. It really sort of, we're starting to get into town meeting preparation, to be honest with you. And I really need to figure out with Jody over the next couple of weeks, what our meeting agendas are going to look like as we get ready for town meeting and review the town meeting warrant. But we can put this on our agenda as soon as possible. So we can take a look at our policy and see if it needs to be tweaked to respond to the concerns that, that you folks are raising. But it's just not something that we are prepared to do tonight.
That, that's fine. I, I, please do look at it. However, I actually reached out to Paul several times. I was planning on meeting with the stormwater management committee. Apparently they postponed several meetings and finally Paul informed me that this decision had to come from the select board. And I, to be honest, I thought that that's, that decision was going to be made by the select board tonight based upon the information. And I, I sent all the information. And I thought that people were going to be looking at the evidence ahead of time and making a decision tonight. But if that's not the case, fine, I'll be patient.
Okay. I mean, the, the reason is, is I mean, I understand and I think the board understands, you know, your position and, and your predicament. But remember that any change to the policy that we make affects everybody in town. So we really need to take a, a bigger look and look at it from an overall perspective from the town, which is what we will do when we review this policy.
Okay. So, so what, what would be the next steps?
The next steps is we will get this on the, on an agenda as soon as we can. And somebody from Town Hall will reach out to you and let you know when it's on the agenda. So you'll know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We are at old and new business. So, um, old business, it's a continuing discussion. Hi Greg. We have a continuing discussion on the request from Nancy Cook on behalf of See a New Sun to conduct a fundraiser by allowing signs on Westford Street Islands is previously done by Westford Against Substance Abuse. Nancy, are you out there? I know you were there before, earlier. Yes, there you are again. You're muted. Yes, you're on mute. Okay, um, so, um, this is a continued discussion from two weeks ago. As I know, everybody remembers, we all know what Nancy's request is on behalf of Sands. At our last meeting, there were some, we, we did raise some concerns about the, um, the legality of this, the consequences of this. Are we opening up the door to unintended consequences if we do this? Tom had raised the question of if we have a policy, can we rescind the policy if we don't like it after the fact? So we, in, in, in light of those questions, I reached out to Council, Greg Corbo, who is with us tonight, to ask him to address some of those questions for us. And to just give us a perspective for us in terms of not just this project, which everybody, you know, as we've said last week, two weeks ago, and as we'll say again, you know, nobody has any issue with the, with the, with, with the prevention of suicide. And the goal here, it's just whether or not, you know, what happens in the future. Particularly if it's something that comes forward that honestly, you know, we may not be as comfortable with as we are with this. So with that introduction, Greg, I'm going to turn it over to you to sort of give the, the board and Nancy and the community on your perspective. So thank you.
Good evening, through you, Madam Chair. My name is Greg Corbo from Town Council's office at KP Law. Before I begin, I just wanted to join in everyone else in extending my best wishes to Mark on his retirement. I'll certainly miss working with you. You always ask the challenging questions as I'm sure you will tonight. But we will always have a piece of, of candy for you at town meeting. Maybe two. So, um, you know, to, to the issue at hand, you know, I obviously have no position on, on the substantive issue of whether or not you allow this. And you know, certainly these things always start off with, with the best of intentions and usually with, with a request that, that everyone can, can get behind and support. But you know, as, as town council, my, my job is, is to look beyond that and, you know, to try to see what the potential pitfalls of your various caused courses of action might be. And, and give you guidance because, you know, these, these questions tend to be complicated. And anytime that you're dealing with, you know, individual rights of free speech, you have to be very careful about how you draw lines and what, what you allow and what you do not allow. And, you know, courts are very protective of rights of free speech and you know, once the door is opened to allowing a forum to be used to send a particular message, whatever that message might be, it is very difficult to then roll that back and exclude messages that you may not deal with in the future. And, you know, by, by way of example, you may have seen as you, you drive around these adopt a highway signs that you might see in, in from place to place. And there has been litigation in circumstances where the Ku Klux Klan has attempted to purchase advertising space or on these adopt a highway signs. And courts in those instances have held that once the forum was, was opened to one group, it must be kept open for all groups, including groups like the Ku Klux Klan who you may not and most likely do not support their message. So, you know, we, we start with the premise that a highway island is not a traditional public forum. It is not one that is commonly used for speech purposes or for communicating individual ideas. However, once the forum is opened, there then are limitations on what you can do with respect to that forum. And so one thing that you cannot do is discriminate against certain messages based on their content. So you are allowed to regulate based on reasonable time, place and manner restrictions. So, you know, you can regulate things like the size of signs, where on the island they might go so that they don't obstruct traffic, how long they can, they can remain in place once they're up. How you administer the program in terms of who gets priority when there are more than, than one request for a particular island. All things like that are within the, the realm of regulation. Once you open up this type of program. Some courts have, have even held that you can go so far as to distinguish between different categories of, of speech. So for example, there is a line of cases involving advertisements on youth sports fields. And, you know, what, what courts have held is that where the purpose of, of placing an advertisement on the youth sports field is to raise money for the town, then it might be permissible to allow businesses to advertise there, but not to allow political candidates to advertise in the same space. And so they drew broad categories, commercial speech versus political speech or religious speech versus campaign related speech. And so you're not this of the message, you're saying all political candidates are excluded, not just those that might subscribe to one particular party. Another line of cases deals with advertising on public transportation. And, you know, the idea that advertising on public transportation is not necessarily for there to communicate ideas, it's there to help raise revenue and, and offset fares. And so there's a little bit more flexibility in terms of how you can regulate. And, and the, the driving factor behind all of those cases is that the regulation that you impose is reasonably related to some other objective. So, you know, the, the question that you have before you is, you know, are you going to open these areas up to speech? You are certainly not required to do so. And courts have made clear that a, a policy of no speech at all is much easier to justify than a policy that distinguishes between different types of speech. But, you know, what's easy may not necessarily be the way that you want to go. And, you know, what I do strongly recommend is that if you are going to open these islands up to any form of, of private signage, that you develop a policy that, that very clearly sets forth what's going to be allowed and under what circumstances. So that you do have the ability to have some measure of control. And, you know, if you do decide to adopt a policy and you find that it's not working for you, you do have the ability to rescind or alter that policy at a later date. However, I would caution about, you know, making specific changes that might be seen as having an intent to block certain messages that you might not like. So there's, there's always that risk that a, a claim like that might be under the surface. So I, I know there's a lot there. I know that this is complicated. But I, I'll open it up to any questions that you might have at this time.
Okay. Thanks so much, Greg. Scott and then Tom?
So Greg, one other question. I, I, I'm wondering these islands are public spaces, correct? And we're looking at a usage by a nonprofit that is also non-count. Is that, we're going to follow the anti-aid amendment or are we, would we be clear?
Well, it, it raises issues under the, the anti-aid amendment as well. So under the anti-aid amendment, you cannot use public property to support private charitable events or purposes. However, there is an exception under the anti-aid amendment for providing support to organizations that provide a public service. And typically what we suggest is that if you have some sort of grant agreement that requires the person using your property or group using your property to provide some public support and stimulation to the community at large, then that might be an exception to the anti-aid amendment.
I guess just a, does that, does that, does that help us with the first issue you raised? Because it clearly suicide prevention is going to be giving benefit to the community. An example, the KKK gives no benefit to the community. So for the same point of, of policy, you know, do, are we helped by, by creating a policy that says, we can only allow signage for nonprofits that have got a tangible benefit to the community at large?
You know, I think that that is, you know, something that you could put in a policy that, that would help, you know, make a rational distinction. The, the problem becomes, I think in this particular case where it's not only a, a private organization that is promoting suicide prevention, but it was my understanding that they're actually selling ad space on town land for the purpose of benefiting their organization. And, and if that's the case, it, it would be difficult in my opinion to distinguish between an advertisement that is used to support a charitable organization and an advertisement that is just used to support whoever it is that, that's doing the advertising. Because an advertisement is an advertisement and it has the same impact on the community in terms of, you know, visual impacts and aesthetics and things like that as this other type of advertisement. And so, you know, it might be one thing to, to allow someone like, for example, you have your banner policy where you allow banners to be flown to advertise community events. That seems like something that, that is of clear community benefit and is aligned, can be drawn because it relates to something that is specific that is going on in your community. But the, the further it gets from, you know, from being related to something else, the more difficult it's going to be to justify differences in treatment.
Tom, you had your hand up?
I did. Thanks Greg. And I think you may have answered this.
I did. Uh, thanks, Greg. And I think you may have answered this, but just for the hypothetical, if we had a well-crafted policy that addressed issues around perceived risks of clutter or signage that was going to block traffic, et cetera, and we we sort of set forth with that policy, uh, and for whatever reason, unexpected consequences came up later, we realized that there was an unexpected, you know, use of it that we didn't think served the public interest, we would have the ability to basically to go back to a ban, no signs for this purpose, without any kind of extraordinary justification. We could just meet as a board and say, we've thought about it, we've got more community input, we've decided we're moving to a ban.
That's correct.
Okay. So with that in mind, as it relates to this topic, um, I guess I might, I'm interested in the discussion, but um it it seems like if we have a clear way to address a problem, if it turns into the problem, then I think we all recognize would be a problem if it, you know, got overwhelming or cluttering or the restrictions or plan that we put in place allowed, you know, messaging in a way that we we no longer thought served the public interest. Um, given that we've got a way to turn it off later, I'm, I guess my my thought is that we would explore some sort of policy to allow us to continue to support, you know, the community in the way that we, I think, at least I'd like to, with an understanding that if it if it isn't manageable because of the world, then we would have a way to change it and stop it.
Yeah, but if I can add, I mean, Tom, you're you're, it sounded to me that your your hypothetical was premised on if, you know, we found, you know, it was cluttering, it was obstructing traffic sites, you know, for those reasons. And and I I don't, I I agree that if for those reasons, yeah, we we could modify the policy without question. But my bigger question is, is what happens if the Ku Klux Klan comes in or something else comes in that we all uh are not comfortable with, that we don't want signs up on our property for that. It's not a cluttering issue, okay? I mean, they they need all the, you know, the regulations in terms of time, place, location, or whatever. But their message, at least we feel, is is not, you know, directed at the community and is offensive. Then the issue becomes, what do we do? And if we if we we sin the policy at that point, have we then it, have we bought, have we then become liable because somebody's going to look at it and say, this is free speech, this is the First Amendment, you are preventing somebody from, uh, you know, speaking, and you're violating their First Amendment rights. That's 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 my concern.
Yeah, so that's exactly my concern too, Andrea, and maybe you've asked the question a better way than I did. I was trying to ask if there was any precondition or restriction or hoops we had to jump through if we met as a board later and decided to stop the policy. So let me just piggyback on Andrea's question. Is there anything extraordinary about realizing that the Ku Klux Klan was able to post through whatever policy we had for us to meet as a board and say, didn't work out, the conditions we have in this policy aren't good, we're gonna ban signs?
So there's sort of two different um ways to view that. So I I agree, you know, with the characterization that if it's based on utter aesthetics, safety, that that is subject to rescission at any time. Um, but, you know, if you, you know, receive an application from, say, the Ku Klux Klan, um, and, you know, they're allowed to have their sign up there for 14 days like everyone else, for example, and at the end of the 14 days, you say, oh, well, we're not going through that again, um, we're gonna rescind the policy, then, in my opinion, I think you would be fine. But if you received an application from the Ku Klux Klan, say, on Monday, and then on Tuesday rescinded your policy, you might have problems, um, because then a a group could argue that even if you say we're rescinding our policy based on aesthetics and safety and traffic, the fact that you rescinded it the day after you received our application shows that your reasons are pretext, and you're really just trying to block us from speaking. Um, the other thing I would caution against is, you know, rescinding the policy after having something that you don't like, waiting a little while, reinstating it, letting it go forward, then rescinding it again when you get something that you don't like. So, I mean, it's a little bit more of a gray area because it does depend on on timing and what the implications of or or how someone might view your motives. But, um, you know, if done correctly, you would be able to rescind the policy at some later point.
Anita?
Yeah, I have a couple of probably disjointed thoughts. And one is that, um, I, uh, there was, there were a couple of emails that were added to our packet um from residents who expressed concerns about um this request. And I think there was one point that was kind of made that resonated with me with, and just that the town property has been so um tightly managed, right, in terms of what we're able to, what signage is allowed. It's very strict. There's a lot of um strict guidelines, what's what's allowed to be posted or not. And I do feel like if we wanted to move forward with this, and this is totally independent of the actual cause, uh, Nancy, because obviously we are all very supportive of the cause, it feels a little bit of like a free-for-all, right? And I'm like, what, it feels very extreme from one to the other. And, um, as a policy head, I'm all about um drafting policies. But I'm like, wow, the management of this would also be a lot of staff time, I imagine, right? Because I forget how many islands we're requesting. But if you're thinking about having to do the upkeep of which island has which sign, when, who's doing that, I feel like that could be a lot of work um for the staff time, and I just wanted to bring up that point, too.
Okay, um, I don't see anything right now from other board members. So Nancy, um, were you, were you waving at me?
Just just quickly to Anita, this has been the signs intermittently since 2012. Um, there hasn't been a a lot of issue, and there also hasn't been a lot of other requests for them. I realize the times are different now, but um, they have been managed fairly well when Wassa put them up, when Dare put them up, when um Lifer Liz put them up. Um, and there hasn't been a problem, but so far we've avoided the Ku Klux Klan. They could come tomorrow. It's a new world. It's a different world. Um, you know, we we're just trying to do good things. As far as your point, Greg, we do give um $5,000 to the schools for a program that's running the school and have for several years. We do a grant for first responders for mental health. This is our third year in doing that. Um, you know, we we raise money to educate for mental health, for substance abuse and suicide.
Okay, I appreciate hearing that, Nancy. Um, so, um, you know, other, I guess, um, for me personally, I continue to remain sort of uncomfortable with this right now. Um, I I think, um, what seemed like a very sort of straightforward request um is really much more complicated uh than we first expected and that, um, uh, we first, I think, appreciated, or at least that I certainly uh did not appreciate uh all the complexities uh with it. Um, I certainly, um, as I'm just not even just to start with not, um, if if we were to approve or have any such uh policy or or permit anything, I really think that we need a policy uh if we're going to do this before we can say yes to something. Um, and if it's something that the board is interested in doing, then, um, I think that, um, we should, um, probably, you know, appoint a small subcommittee um to work with town council um in terms of drafting a policy uh for further consideration. But at least, um, as as much as, um, uh, I support suicide uh prevention and all of the good work that Sands has done and, um, the the grants that they give to the schools and to the first responders, um, I'm I'm very fearful of where this could lead um in the future. And I just, without some sort of policy even to start with, um, I just can't support this right now. Mark?
Yes, so Greg, I have a um question. So I was doing a little research today and asked Jody to do something to um on various towns, and I couldn't find any town in Massachusetts, anyway, that actually has a policy, but a lot of them have the adopt an island kind of thing going in town where, you know, you get to put your sign up that you, you know, clean this, you did that. You know, on 110, yeah, I know it's the state, um, and I'm sure there are different rules because it's the state versus local. But, um, you know, Whole Foods gets to put their, you know, marker on, you know, on 110. And other towns have, you know, you can put, you know, you've adopted this island. So I'm confused really as to, you know, the reality of being challenged versus maybe there's a nuance in what, you know, on state roads you can do versus movies that just adopt the sign, which is a little bit different than what Nancy's asking for. Just trying to understand a little bit more.
Yeah, sure. And, um, you know, I'm not aware of of other towns that that have these policies. At least I haven't worked on them with them. Um, but, you know, I did do the research in response to this question and did find case law, that specific example involving an adopt a highway program and a request by the Ku Klux Klan. And I think that has come up in a couple of of situations. And, um, you know, all I can say is that, you know, that that others may do so without having a policy, um, you know, is is their prerogative. Um, they haven't asked me. Um, if they did, I would give them the same advice I'm giving you. Um, you know, you as a board have to decide what your tolerance for risk is. Um, you know, you have, um, found yourself on on the wrong side of of national media attention on issues like this in the past. So it's not out of the realm of possibility that someone would pick this up and decide to make an example of Westwood. But that's not to say it would it would happen at all. You know, you're, you may decide to to do this without a policy, and you may do it for years and nothing may ever happen. Um, but, you know, my job as town council is to give you enough information to make an informed decision um and decide what level of risk you're willing to take on.
Thank you.
Tom?
Uh, just to your point, Andrea, I I don't object to a policy. And and certainly, we all got letters that highlighted a lot of cases where sort of an unrestricted way of, you know, posting stuff could end up, you know, being detrimental. So, um, I think having some guide rails on, you know, time, place, and size is would be worthwhile to have.
Okay, so, um, let me, in the interest of moving things along and time and um, is it the sense of the board at at this point in time, um, until we have a policy in place that we should um not allow, um, uh, not permit um this project or this proposal to go forward, along with any other one that might uh come before us, uh, to give us an opportunity to look, uh, one, to decide if if we do want to do a policy. And secondly, then, if the answer is yes to that, to work with town council to create one. Is is that, can I get, is that a sense of the board? Scott?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I think to uh get to Greg's point, how much risk do you want to take? Um, you know, I'll take some, but I will take, I won't take a risk, which is no policy at all. And, um, and we're open to, you know, let's say fair. So we, I definitely agree with you, Andrea. We did it. Please not not do it right now.
No, we're not doing it tonight. Um, Mark, Anita, and Tom, I know, Tom, you said you were okay with that. Anita and Mark?
Um, I'm okay with that.
I will, uh, allow then my replacement to weigh in on that when they
Okay, that sounds good. All right. So, um, so Nancy, um, you know, not that we don't support it, but just not this, um, you know, not this proposal at this time, but perhaps
I appreciate, I appreciate your thoughts and your efforts and and your support for Sands. And I hope you will put together a policy so we can come back and hopefully raise some more money so we can do some more good things in the school.
Great. Thank you very
Thanks. Sorry for taking up so much time. Mark, thank you for your time. Take care.
No problem. It was a discussion that needed to be had. So thank you very much.
Take care. Bye-bye.
All right.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Greg. Thank you. Okay, we took care of the, um, uh, follow-up on the select board approving public statements by appointed boards and committees before released to the public. Mark, this was yours suggestion.
No, I, um, yeah, so, um, again, I probably should, you know, allow you guys to deliberate in on this going forward. But I think you, you know, you recalled that it's really just a a thought about if somebody's going to be representing uh representing us, you know, should we, or do you want to, you know, have some sort of notice before it goes out? So, you know, I don't need to drag it out. That's really up to you guys if you want to do that.
Okay. Um, Jody, did you, you have your hand up?
Yes, you asked me to reach out to other communities, and I did. And no one has a policy like this. The only town was Medfield, and their policy is all public statements go to the town manager first for approval. And I really hope that doesn't happen because it seems like that would add a whole new layer of work to me. But, um, that was, that's my answer. No one else has this policy that responded to me.
Scott?
Yeah, so, um, you know, we we are one of many boards and committees in town, and um, many of those are appointed by us to take on either research for us, make recommendations for us, where in some cases like, you know, ZBA, you want them to be quasi, well, actually independently, almost, I think, quasi-traditional is how, you know, Sam Frank used to call it. So I'm kind of, um, I'll say, I'm actually outward of opposed to do that we would be, you know, telling other committees what they can and can't say to the public. Um, and if I look, take a look at what I think, you know, most recently, the the DEI statement, I thought that was the best written, you know, committee document I've read in a long, long time. That was really, really well done. And, um, I I don't really want to be in the position of of of, uh, wordsmithing or second-guessing other 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 town boards or committees.
Um, any other comments? I mean, I I'm I'm sort of in Scott's camp. I really don't want my inbox flooded with statements from every committee or board in town and then having to look at them or wordsmith them. Um, you know, I I trust them. They, part of them, as Scott said, we 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 depend on them to educate us. That's part of the reason sometimes we appoint them. And also, uh, if it turns out that we have a disagreement, um, then we all get together and we have a discussion and we talk about it. And hopefully, we each, you know, uh, compromise, there's at least some, uh, uh, agreement about how we're, what we're going to do moving forward. So, um, honestly, with everything else we've got on our plate right now and everything I keep putting on our plate for future meetings during this particular meeting, this one isn't high on my priority list. So, okay, with that, um, unless anybody, unless anyone else has anything to say, we finish up old and new business. Um, we have a request from the Economic Development Committee to appoint Tom Kotarakas as an alternate minute member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Tom?
So so moved, and Tom came to a meeting. He's he'll be a great contribution. So appreciate his time.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor? Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Um, we have a request from, uh, Jody to appoint Mike Wells to the Communication Advisory Committee as a full member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. Oh, Mike Wells, thank you so much for volunteering. Um, I think he
The volunteer was drafted.
He did not volunteer. He did not volunteer. Bob Jeffries volunteered, and but he agreed.
Okay, well, thank you, uh, for agreeing to being to being volunteered. Um, so is there a motion to appoint, uh, Mike to the Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor? Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. And then we have a request from our town clerk to appoint election officers for terms to expire on July 31st, 2021. Um, is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so we're at our 8:35 PM item. So we're at our eight thirty-five P M. item, which is we are about to take positions on various warrant articles and we also have to vote to close the warrant. Is that right, Jody? Somehow I thought we'd already done that, but whatever. Um, why don't we vote, uh, to close the warrant first? Um, so is there a motion to close the warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Hi.
Um?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. So running through the articles that are on our agenda tonight, um, starting with accept town reports. Uh, Jody, do I, anything to say about this other than it's the usual first article on our warrant?
Looking for, uh, the board's approval.
Okay. Is there a motion to recommend approval?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, uh, Article 12, appropriate chapter 90 local transportation funds for roadway maintenance. Again, okay, um, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those, uh, in favor of recommending approval? Um, Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, Article 13 is an appropriate, appropriate funds from the water enterprise, other post employment benefits, otherwise, otherwise known as OPEC, stipulate stab stabilization fund to the water enterprise budget. To recommend approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Hi. Um, Article 16, which authorizes the select board to accept easements. Is there a motion to recommend approval?
So moved. So? Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, um, Article 17 is a citizen's petition. Um, and it is, uh, brought by, um, Barry Rosenberg. Um, and it is, uh, an amendment to the Constitution of the United States. So, uh, Barry, um, if, uh, you would like to, um, Eric, if you would unmute Barry and Barry can unmute himself. And if you'd like to, uh, present your article, uh, Barry, that would be terrific.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Thank you. A little trouble unmuting myself.
No problem.
Okay, uh, I will try to summarize this since we are running so late and you probably want to go to bed tonight. The, uh, the article, uh, asks the town of Westford to call upon the U S Congress to pass and send to the state gratification amended amendment to the Constitution of the United States that firmly establishes that, um, constitutional rights belong to human beings only and that, um, election spending is not free speech and is therefore subject to regulation by federal and state governments.
Um, Barry, do you, do you want to give any, um, uh, further background on why you're bringing this forward or what prompted it?
Um, sure. Citizens United versus FEC, which is quite famous and well discussed, um, was passed in 2010. There have been many attempts to amend the Constitution by many groups because election spending has skyrocketed and artificial entities like corporations have danced around, um, federal and state regulations that were designed to protect its citizens. Um, thanks to the Citizens United decision. Um, and, uh, it has been in several U S Congresses and hasn't moved forward enough. It has been in our State House and, uh, made it past committees last session, but then COVID struck. And so it died. And, uh, there have been eighty-something towns that have, um, done what I am asking Westford to do. Uh, the purpose of, uh, establishing the power in Massachusetts to support such an amendment is happening. We should hopefully put more pressure on the U S Congress to act. The federal version of this has been filed very, very recently in the House of Reps. Uh, hopefully the Senate will jump on it. And Westford becoming one more town that supports it in Massachusetts will hopefully help get the ball rolling.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Nope. Okay.
Oh, and it will, it will not cost the, the town of Westford one cent.
Okay. Always good to know. We, we do have a comment from John Cunningham, um, and, uh, his comment is he recommends the select board decline to vote, decline to vote on this. It's strictly a political issue. Scott?
Well, I was, I was thinking for a different reason. I, I, you know, the, the article is meant to be the will of town meeting. It's not really a town policy document. So from my perspective, we're five votes at town meeting. But this is a select board issue that, you know, affects the towns. But I, I tend to agree with John for different reasons that, you know, I don't see why we take a position on this, on this. What's about the time to do with a town meeting?
Okay. Um, other comments, um, from the board? Mark and then Tom?
Yeah, I concur both with John and, uh, Scott.
Okay, and Tom?
Uh, I concur with Scott. I, I would support this as an individual, but, um, it doesn't seem like it's a, it's an issue before us. Is the town policy making better?
Yeah, um, I, I think, um, I, I think that's right. Um, I think it's, uh, an individual, uh, decision, um, as opposed to, uh, a select board and a town policy. So, um, so.
I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion to take no position. Is that how that would work then?
I think so.
I wouldn't want to say no.
Jody is shaking her head no.
Well, you don't have to unless, um, unless you want to. I mean, we, we would generally just say the town, uh, did not take a position.
Or the select board didn't take.
I'm sorry. What did I say? Town? I'm sorry. I'm getting tired.
I know. I know. Um, yeah, I don't know that we need to take a, a formal vote, Scott. I think we can just, uh, state that, you know, uh, we're not taking a position. If somebody at town meeting asks us why the board hasn't, uh, taken a position, then we will tell them why the board hasn't taken a position, uh, in our reasoning, uh, for it.
Just want to, just want to make sure that we were, we were legal, that's all.
Yep. Okay, so, um, so Barry, um, the board is not going to take a position, um, on this article. Um, we will all, uh, vote as individuals at town meeting, um, um, but that, um, does not mean that you don't have, uh, individual support, um, or non-support as the case may be, but, um, just as a board, uh, we're, we're going to pass on taking a position on this. But thank you for being here tonight and certainly thank you for filing your citizen's petition, um, and bringing this, uh, forward, uh, to town meeting for, uh, discussion. So thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And you took the correct position by not taking one.
Okay. Well, all right. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
All right. Article 18 is an authorization for the select board to petition the general court for one additional chapter, one thirty-eight, section fifteen, all alcohol package store license to be exercised by Feng Yu Inc., located at one seventy-five Littleton Road, Westford. Um, and, uh, this is being brought by, um, Iverson. Um, wow. Um, Guo?
Guo.
Guo, I'm sorry. Um, thank you. Um, so, um, I, Iverson, if, uh, again, Eric, if you would unmute Iverson and Iverson unmute yourself, um, we can hear you. This is a citizen's petition as well.
Hello, good evening. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Very nice to meet you. My name is Iverson Guo. Uh, I'm the owner of a karma restaurant, um, in Westford. Uh, I love this town so much. I've been, uh, start my first business back to two thousand and six. Uh, I've been here over fifteen years. I'm very, um, I'm very grateful to be part of this, this great community. So that's, that's the reason why I reinvest, uh, my karma in two thousand and nine and rebuild it. So everyone have a better dining experience and, uh, you know, just treat like this is a family. Uh, very, very fortunate and happy to be here. And just.
And so, and so you're looking for, um, an all alcohol package store license, um, for a, uh, store to be located, um, next to Karma or is that right?
Yeah. So, um, I proposed this idea to my landlord, uh, the wider company. Um, I'm thinking to put like, uh, boutique, uh, liquor store. It's not just like the other store right at corner. I really tried to want to bring some Asian culture to be here. For instance, like a Japanese sake, Japanese whiskey, Chinese, uh, rice wine, um, really give, um, um, people more variety, uh, in this, the community. And also it's, uh, it's, uh, we, we have a, uh, capable, uh, ability to, um, to teach or just give some people like a lesson. Um, so I think, I think that's, uh, that, that's a, that's a great to be the diversified, uh, business in town.
Okay, thank you. Um, Attorney Burke is, uh, also, uh, uh, out there, uh, who, uh, represents, uh, Iverson. Um, and I believe, uh, would also like to speak. So if we could, um, unmute him.
Andrea, what'd you say his name was?
Um, Attorney Burke, Brian Burke?
Got it. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, great. I've been watching, uh, for the last hour or so. I would be in my PJs right now typically. I just wanted to say that.
Thanks for hanging in with us. It's been, uh, it's, we've had a lot to discuss tonight.
I know. It's been interesting, actually. I have to say that. I, I did want to add that, um, uh, that there is an opportunity to fill a need, uh, as well. I know that adding another, uh, uh, license to the community ought seems, uh, like it, it's not necessary or some people may think it's not necessary. But when you're starting to talk about something that's more of a boutique that will, uh, not only, uh, fill a need for the, uh, the, the increased population in the Asian community, but I think it, I think it's a great opportunity to expand, uh, the knowledge and the culture, uh, to the, to the rest of the community in the area. And you start seeing that by some of the, uh, the markets that the one, the new one in Littleton that's been there for a couple of years now. There's also one in Acton. So I think that, uh, by, by participating and in doing something like this, that we're going to be expanding, um, not just to the Asian community, but just to the community in general, especially, uh, when we have such a population in the area. I think it'd be great. Uh, he was talking, uh, Iverson was talking about educating, uh, and people in the community so that they could, uh, understand uh, how like rice wine is made and how you want to go about making your selections and things like that, which isn't very common in, in the community. And, and although he may be, uh, fulfilling a need, I think he's also, uh, uh, supplying, uh, uh, a need in the community where he can create a market so that, uh, he's not just, uh, providing a service to one, uh, asset facet of the community, but, uh, to, to, to everyone. I think it would be, uh, uh, something that's new. I think it would be, uh, uh, helpful economically in the community as well. And so, um, I hope that, uh, you would support this and just to say thank you for your time. But also, uh, we, we had an opportunity to meet with the Economic Development Committee. And, uh, they were very supportive and unanimously voted to support the article. So we're, we're looking forward to this opportunity. And I know that you, some of you may know Iverson and what he does.
I, I think we, we, um, we, we hear you and we, we, we understand, um, yours and, and Iverson's position. And, um, I think the board is actually ready to vote. So Mark, I assume raising your hand because you're going to make a motion.
Yeah, yes, but one very quick question beforehand, which is, um, I think the concept is great and I do support it, but just, uh, for clarification, when we issue these licenses, the intent um, doesn't go with it, right? So to the extent that for whatever reason it wasn't successful, um, that license carries into that location, it can be whatever, whatever that, that, um, license allows, right? So the intent of what he's trying to do, um, isn't really that important other than to support the case. But if it were to fail, it could go, it would just be another liquor store potentially.
It could be, but that's not what our intent would be.
That's why I specifically stated that when we're voting on this, just, you know, I support it. I think the intent is great and I think the concept is great. But recognize that, um, all that's interesting, but it, it, at the end of the day, it's just a package store at some point in time if it fails.
I think that we'll make a motion to.
I think you get a great point. Um, you, you thinking about the, uh, the, the, the good side and the bad side. I totally agree. Uh, there's always have a risk for the, uh, for the business. But the thing about the, uh, the karma over the years, uh, what I wanted to try to build this, it's not just the, uh, another business, uh, it's a culture. And, uh, more importantly, uh, karma brand has been, uh, recognized by so many community. And today, uh, I was, I'm on the, uh, the Boston Globe, uh, the, uh, the, the, the food, the food page. They, so the reporter writer reviewed about karma in Burlington, new opening. So, uh, I think, uh, when we tried to open that, all the karma store, uh, were, were also to promote. This is the, the, this is the, the culture, uh, to, to drive this, the business to be successful. Uh, obviously, we don't want to be failed, but it's not.
Okay, okay. Uh, I'm going to interrupt you because I really do think the board is ready to vote and I would like to conclude this meeting before eleven o'clock tonight. So I, I apologize for cutting you off, but, um, I, I think we understand where both of you are coming from and we know what a, uh, good corporate, uh, citizen karma is here in Westford and we are very appreciative of you. Scott?
The motions, I was gonna say, I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all those in favor? Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you both very much. We'll see you at town meeting.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, um, Article twenty, which is to amend the town's general and zoning bylaws to reflect inclusive language. Um, this is part of the ongoing process we've had for about a year now, um, and hopefully, uh, finishing it up, uh, at this point. So is there a motion to recommend approval?
So moved.
Is there a second? Um, all those in favor? Uh, Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. And last for tonight, um, is, uh, to establish a municipal, to establish a municipal charges lien pursuant to general law, chapter forty, section fifty-eight for unpaid stormwater utility fees. Um, Jody, is this you or Steve? Does somebody just want to explain to us in the public what this is?
Yeah, I don't know who's in the background, but, um, we talked about.
I'm sorry, Jody, Christine Collins looks like she's out there. So I think perhaps she wants to do it. She's been waiting all night to do this.
Can you hear me?
We can. We can.
Oh, awesome. All right, so this is just a way that we can lean the unpaid stormwater fees as it is right now. Without this, we're, we're not going to be able to put a lien on the unpaid stormwater fees. If we can lean them, then we can add them to the real estate tax bill and that would become collectible with the real estate under a tax title if it ended up continuing to be uncollected. And there's a really good process already in place for that. So I would like to be able to do that so we can hopefully maintain better collection rates for stormwater fees than we would have without it.
Great. Question, Mark?
No, not a question, motion directly.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes.
Aye. Thanks so much, Christine.
All right, thank you and thanks, Mark, for everything. We'll see you at Capitol.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
All right. Board reports and updates, do we have any? Okay, moving right along. Minutes for approval, for release. We have minutes from March 23rd, 2021. Let's do them separate because two of us weren't there April 1st. So March 23rd, 2021, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor, um, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark?
I'm loving that I'm going to be able to pass on the yeses to somebody, yes.
All right. And then do we have a motion to approve the April 20, 21 minutes with the joint meeting with the FINCOM?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, um, all those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark?
abstain.
All right, Scott?
Yes.
And I abstain as well. All right, we're at our town manager's report.
Finally.
Sorry, I'm, I'm.
I warned you, okay? I gave you four, fair warning at the beginning of the meeting.
Bob Jeffries and I are, are talking business in the background. So, okay, uh, so number one, I'm requesting for you to approve the fiscal 22 non-union pay classification plan.
Is there a motion to approve? Or actually, Jody, did you just, for the public who are watching, did you just want to say what that is?
Sure, every year we have you vote this. This represents a 2% COLA and for, it's for non-union. All the union are in their collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, now is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, um, Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, secondly, we're requesting from the fire department for you to approve accepting all reimbursements from FEMA Public Assistance Program for supplies purchased and services provided in response to COVID. We're getting a lot of reimbursements. I don't want to have to bring them all to you. If you can give me a blanket, approval will get the money in the bank.
Sounds good to me. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Yes.
Well done.
And I'm asking you to appoint Eric Heideman as acting town manager beginning Monday, May 3rd through Monday, May 10th.
With appointing authority.
We extend it for a couple of weeks?
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor, um, Scott?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the contracts, our National Red Cross to park a disaster trailer at the Fletcher Fire Station, one at 65 Boston Road, as requested by the fire department. Two is a contract with David Demoresk for the management of the Hill Orchard from fiscal 22 to 24 in the amount of $21,000 for the first year. But I would like that subject to working out conditions with council that the town agrees to or bringing it back to the board. And PJ Keating Company Newport Construction Corp. and Aggregate Industries for bituminous concrete at unit prices listed in the meeting packet as requested by the DPW. A purchase order modular communications for a backup simple cast repeater at the DPW in the amount of $21,191.20 as requested by the fire department.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, um, Tom?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to waive reading correspondence?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, and.
Motion to.
And is there a second?
Second.
I would note that I'm only eighteen minutes over, okay? Just for the record, okay?
You stayed on like an hour, Andrea. At some point, we were in our minds.
That was a full plate. Well done, Madam Chairman.
Anyway, all those in favor? And on that note, good night, Mark. Thank you very much. Good night, Westford. Everybody be well, stay healthy. Thank you all. Good night.
Take care, everybody. See you soon.
Good night.
Thanks.